Well, hello, everybody. This is State Representative Buzz Brockway, and we are launching our, really, our first online town hall meeting of the 2014 session. And I appreciate you tuning in and listening to what we've got going on here. Just want to give you a brief update of what's happened thus far in the 2014 legislative session, and then we'll get right to your questions. So it's been a, been an interesting year. As you know, it's an election year, and that seems to bring a level of complexity to things that may not otherwise exist. But I think we've done some good things this year thus far. We've got a lot of things floating out there that are sort of halfway done. They've either passed the House or passed the Senate, and they're now being considered by the other body. There's a couple items of interest that I'll point out to you. Number one is House Bill 875, which is our Second Amendment bill by my friend and colleague, Representative Rick Jaspers. And they passed the House with, I don't know if there are any Democrats voting for it, I don't recall, and pretty much unanimous support among Republicans. And it is being considered by the Senate right now. I believe they've had a hearing on it, and hopefully they'll move that bill forward as it is. A couple of provisions in it. It basically expands where you can carry a weapon. Now, we've got to clarify that this, we're talking about people with concealed weapons permits. Those are folks that are over the edge of 21, have gone through a background check, have done the other things that they need to do to acquire a permit to do this. We're not just talking about any joker walking around doing what he wants to do. This bill would allow people to carry in churches and restaurants, and that needs to be clarified a little further because when we're talking about carrying a weapon in churches and restaurants that serve alcohol, we're talking about if the church allows it, if the restaurant allows it, private property rights trump. So if a church or a restaurant says, "This is my private property. I don't want you carrying a weapon here," then that, that's what, that's what happens. That's, that trumps the person's ability to carry a weapon there. Those are sort of, have become sort of the most controversial aspects of the bill. Excuse me. But, you know, for someone like me, I voted for it, and I'll explain to you why I voted for it. I believe strongly in our Second Amendment rights to carry a weapon to protect yourself in cases where you might need that. And it's a very personal decision. Not everybody has a concealed weapons permit. I don't. I'll probably get one one of these days, but I don't right now, and that's just my choice, and other people have the choice to carry what, carry if they want to, and I support that right 100%. I will point out that these provisions that I just mentioned to you, the ability to carry, use your concealed weapons permit to carry in a church or in a restaurant that serves alcohol, those are provisions that many other states, in fact, most other states allow that. Georgia's one of the few that currently don't. So unfortunately, opponents are portraying this as some sort of radical, radical step. They're really not. It's just expanding people's rights to carry weapons. Campus carry, as it's termed, is not in the bill. We did not put in the bill allowing, again, 21-year-olds who go through the process of obtaining a concealed weapons permit, do not allow in this bill for them to carry their weapon. Excuse me. Getting over a bit of a cold. We do not allow in House Bill 875 them to carry their weapon on a college campus. However, we did remove the criminal penalty there, and it just becomes a civil fine. And there are a number of other provisions in the bill that I'll be happy to answer questions about. I won't elaborate on any further. But the bill's in the Senate, and just checking to see if we've got any questions right now. The bill's in the Senate right now and is being considered by our colleagues over there. So I'd urge you to, I got an email today from a constituent asking, "Should I contact my senator about this?" Absolutely. And the reason being, I have no reason to believe that this, that our senator, Renee Underman, she's, she'll support, she'll support the bill, I'm sure. But the, they need to know, folks need to know if you support this. That's very helpful because you can be sure that the opponents are letting you, letting our senator know how they feel. So if you, if you support the bill or you oppose the bill, let your senator know how you feel. That's very valuable. One other thing that I, that I'd like to tell you, and then I'll, hold on one second. One of our folks is trying to log in here. Let me make sure we're, we're online here. I'd say we have a couple viewers, but let me make sure that we're online. This is the beauty of live broadcast, as those of you who watch, watch my online town Seems to be working okay. Got a couple second delay, but we're working. So let me retweet to one of our viewers here that we're, we're online. Just go to www.voteforbuzz.com, and you should be able to see it. All right. Thanks for your patience. The other thing I wanted to mention to you that happened just today, as folks who've read my newsletter know, I've been working on the Convention of the States Project. And what that is, is a call for an Article V constitutional convention. Article V refers to Article V of the U.S. Constitution, which is the provision that describes how the Constitution can be amended. There's two ways to do it. Obviously, the one that most folks are familiar with would be Congress proposing an amendment by a two-thirds vote in both bodies of the Congress and sending that to the states for ratification. Excuse me. The second part of that, of Article V, spells out how states can actually propose amendments to the Constitution. And the way that happens is 34 states would issue a call for a convention for the purpose of proposing amendments. And then those states would come together, if you reach 34 that have similar calls, those states would come together and meet, and they would propose amendments, which would then be sent to the states where 38 states would have to ratify that. So the Convention of the States Project is seeking to have an Article V convention called for the purpose of proposing amendments based on three limited topics. The topic of limiting federal power, limiting the, imposing fiscal restraint on the federal government, and then imposing limits on terms of office for federal officers. And that could be term limits on congressmen, or it could be, some folks, some historians will point out to you that when the founding fathers, when the Constitution was written, and it put in lifetime appointment for Supreme Court justices, for example, you know, the life expectancy back in those days was probably 45 or 50. The founding fathers never conceived of the idea that someone would serve on the Supreme Court for 30, 40 years. So perhaps we need to consider a reappointment process, or maybe even term limits for federal judges. But those are a couple of the ideas that are thrown out there. So the Convention of the States Project is something that I've been working with. We introduced a resolution, House Resolution 1215, that I introduced in the House, and on the Senate side, Senator Cecil Staton introduced Senate Resolution 736. And mine passed the House, and Senator Staton's passed the Senate. They switched over, and we decided to, that the most expeditious route to getting this ratified by both houses would be to go with Senator Staton's version, Senate Resolution 736. We did that, and today, on the House floor, that resolution passed, so it's now passed both bodies. So it is in effect. Georgia became the first state in the United States to issue this Convention of the States Project call for an Article V convention for the purpose of proposing amendments of those three areas of limiting federal power that I described just a moment ago. So I'm very excited. I'm excited that Georgia's first, excited that we've taken the lead on this, and hopefully other states will follow suit. I understand that Alaska may have even voted on it today, this afternoon. They're a few hours behind us. We'll have to check on that. Alabama is poised to do it. This bill's been introduced, this resolution, rather, has been introduced in South Carolina, and Florida, and South Dakota, and a handful of other states, maybe 10 or 15 states right now where it is working its way through the legislative process. And we hope that this, we hope that this catches on. Some folks are afraid of the idea of a runaway convention, and I, we've taken a few steps in Georgia that I want to point out to you. We have passed a bill, and we are considering another bill that would impose, or rather, excuse me, would set up rules and regulations on how a delegate to one of these Article V conventions should we have on, what instructions that the legislature would give them, how they must follow the instructions that the legislature gives them. If they don't, there's a process for removing them. They can even be, these delegates could even be criminally prosecuted if they willfully and knowingly violate the instructions that the legislature gives them. So I think as far as Georgia concerned, and several other states have passed similar laws, that, you know, we're, we're going to maintain control of our delegates. We're not going to let them vote on things that we don't want them voting on. So it's going to be limited to those topics. Georgia, another thing that I think prevents a runaway convention is the, just the high bar. It takes 34 states to even call a convention, and it takes 38 states to pass any amendment. So I think it's going to be extremely difficult for some amendment to be proposed or to be ratified that is really out of the mainstream of American political thought. I think it's, I think it, this is a process that can be really good for our politics. Politics in America, as you well know, very divided. You've got the right, right, and the left, and, excuse me, we seem to be at each other's throat all the time. But if we, if, if I want an amendment passed, I'm going to have to build consensus. I'm going to have to get Democrats to support my idea. It's just going to have to happen. There's not enough Republican-run states to pass an amendment. There's not enough Democrat-run states to pass an amendment. So we're going to have to come together. I believe these amendments are going to have to be ideas that the American people support in a broad-based fashion. And so I really think that this really could have a good impact on our political system. It's going to bring us together. It's going to force us to, to talk to each other and work with each other and find consensus around issues related to fiscal restraint of the federal government, related to restraining power. I would think people on the right and the left would both agree that, you know, when George Bush was in power, Democrats were always complaining about Bush issuing executive orders and that he should work with Congress. Well, we on the right now, we complain that President Obama does the same thing. We ought to address that. We ought to address that a president can't just, with a stroke of a pen, ignore the will of the Congress. So we've got to take a look at those executive orders. So those are a couple of the things that I've been working on, a couple of bills that have gone through. We have passed the budget. The Senate is, may have passed the budget today or might tomorrow, in which case the House and Senate will form a conference committee and beginning, hammering out the fine-tuned, fine-tuned details of that. It does have a rather large increase for education spending, about close to $400 million in new money between the supplemental budget and the new budget, which I think our schools are very happy about, much-needed money after years and years of cuts. Hopefully, we'll put those in programs. And I hope that they give raises to teachers. The state gives money to the local school systems. We're trying to do it in a fashion that, with as few strings attached as possible, and let local school systems run their, school system the way they want. So I hope that they would use that money to hand out raises to people, to teachers and other staff. Couple of other items that come to mind, we've, there's a bill, I'd probably like to get your opinion on it, a bill that passed the Senate, and it's called Ava's Law, and it deals with autism funding. Should, should Georgia require insurance companies to sell insurance in the state of Georgia to cover autism in children? Believe the bill is capped at maybe $25,000 or $30,000. I may not have the exact number right. Capped at that, so that the spending can't go above that on, the insurance spending, rather, coming out of your policy. Can't do that if you, if you need that sort of coverage. And I, I'll probably put a poll on the website and through our Vote for Buzz app about that bill, see what you folks think about it. It's a, it's become a big issue. Autism, as you folks know, is a, has become a much more prevalent disease, especially in children. And families, as you know, who are, who struggle with this, who have children with autism, struggle very much financially. It can be very devastating financially, and perhaps this is a way to help those families. But we'll put a poll up about that this weekend and have you tell me what you think about that, because I'd like to know what's your thoughts on that. We are, crossover day was this past Monday. Let me explain, for those of you who don't know what crossover day is. There's a Senate rule that, because the, you know, the House, we have 180 members, and each one of the 180 members, we're always working on ideas, and we'll come up with a couple ideas and write a bill about it and pass it, and send it over to the Senate. So that can generate an enormous amount of bills. So the Senate said, "Hey, there's only 56 senators." So they're working on things too, but, you know, they don't generate as, as many bills as we do in the House, simply because of the sheer numbers. So the Senate said, "We're not going to consider a bill that has not passed the House of Representatives after the 30th legislative day." So that's become known as crossover day. Bill's got to cross over from one body to the other. So there's a lot of bills that get introduced that don't quite make it, and they, some of them die, some of them reappear as an amendment to another bill. So that's sort of what happens. Crossover day was Monday night, and we were there. The House was there. We passed, I believe, 53 bills that day, or voted on, rather, a couple were voted down. 53 bills that day, and sent them to our colleagues in the Senate. So generally, what happens is, after the 30th day, we will, the, we in the House will start taking a look through the committee process at Senate bills, and the Senate does the same thing, that after the 30th, they start considering House bills. So we're right now sort of in a lull as committees are meeting. Not a whole lot of bills have been voted on on the floor the last couple days as things continue to work through committee. So that's sort of what's going on in the House right now. I'm on the Governmental Affairs Committee, and we have been dealing all session with quite an interesting scenario where we have three proposals for new cities in the, in DeKalb County. Tucker, which folks who've lived around here probably would be surprised to know that Tucker is not a city, is not officially a city. So that's interesting. I just got a text, a text question about this, asking if I'm a supporter of Lakeside. Lakeside is another one of the proposals. So we've got three proposals, Tucker, Lakeside, and Broward Cliff. And what is interesting is they draw maps of what they want their city to look like, and right now, all three of those cities overlap. So it's become a, quite a dicey issue. I think the last thing folks in DeKalb County want, and I know the last thing that I want to do, and as a person who doesn't live in DeKalb, is try to tell those folks in those proposed cities what their line should be. So I'm hopeful that the, that the people in those three cities can, can come together, work out the lines, and then we can have something, something move forward. I, my sort of default position on cityhood proposals is, if it's financially viable, which each city proposal must go have a feasibility study done. So if it's feasible, financially feasible, then I don't want to be one to stand in the way of letting the people of those, of that area vote by referendum on whether they want to form a city or not. I just, that's sort of my default position. So we haven't had, since I've been there, a situation like this where you've got three groups of citizens wanting one piece of land. They all seem to be fighting over the Northlake Mall area and a little area there near Spaghetti Junction. That's kind of the, geographically where it is. So, you know, do I support Lakeside? Sure. I also support Tucker and Broward Cliff. I support all of their ability to, to form a city if they want to. So that's, that's sort of occupied a lot of time. We've, I've gotten, if I haven't replied to an email of yours, I apologize. I've been playing catch-up. I've probably received from folks living in the Tucker area, maybe 800 emails from Broward Cliff and Lakeside. They've cranked up the email list too, and I've received a couple hundred from those areas too. So I've sort of been a little swamped with, with emails. So if I haven't gotten back to you, if I've missed an email that you've sent me, I apologize. I'm trying to catch up, and I hopefully will be caught up, caught up tomorrow. So looking to see if we've got any questions here. We have the one about the city of Lakeside, and that person thought Lakeside was a good idea. I hope we can get it, I hope we can get it worked out to allow a referendum to move forward so that the folks in that area can decide what form of government they want. Just look around here and see if we've got any questions. If you've got one, go at, go to voteforbuzz.com and, and post it there in the comments section. Hit refresh, see if we've got any questions. Sometimes folks send me emails, sometimes they send me texts, sometimes they post it on Facebook. So let me scan through and see where we're at. All right. Don't see any questions right now. Let me look through and see what other bills of interest there might be out there that We had an interesting debate today. I'm sure you folks are all familiar with, with LegalZoom, the website where you can go and get legal, you know, forms, legal forms, things like that, wills and things like that, and not have to go hire an attorney. So a bill was proposed to, the bill quite simply says that LegalZoom would, put in the law that not just LegalZoom, but any service like that is not practicing law without a license. And a lot of the attorneys in the legislature were concerned that that provides blanket immunity to LegalZoom and other organizations like that, that if, if you download a form from them and that, and fill it out wrong, and you say you're, you know, you, something bad happens, and you, it's a mistake, and you lose your ability to, you lose something or are harmed by that by more or less filling out the wrong form or taking bad advice from LegalZoom through LegalZoom's website, that you have no recourse. They were afraid that that would be the impact of that bill. So big debate on the floor today. The bill was tabled, and we'll, they're going to try to tweak it and consider, the issues came up about that we have a House rule, well, yeah, House rule that requires us, if we have a conflict, an ethical conflict, that we should recuse ourselves from the vote. So one of our attorney friends recused, said he's going to recuse himself from the vote. Well, if one attorney recuses himself from the vote, then should they all recuse themselves from the vote? And that sort of set off lots of discussion. You know, attorneys are in, sort of in the position where if you're, if you're a practicing attorney, you're going, you're coming in contact with the law on a, on a daily basis. And of course, folks, attorneys make their living dealing with the law. So if they can't vote on, on legal matters, then that's sort of, what can they vote on? So there's discussions going on about how properly to interpret that, that House rule to make sure that our attorneys are not in any ethical conflict. Also, some tweaks going on to the bill to see if it can be improved. So it's one of those things, you don't really think it's, doesn't sound like a controversial issue, that that bill passed the Senate, I think with one no vote. And in the House, it took on a whole, a whole life of its own. And that's, you know, one of the benefits of having a, two bodies, two bodies in your House, in your legislature, rather, the House and the Senate. And because there are things that, different ways of looking at it, a fresh set of eyes looking at a bill, you might discover something that you didn't think of before, and that's sort of what happened with this bill. So looking around to see if we've got any questions. I don't see any. If you've got one, go ahead and send it in. We'll wait a few more minutes, I think, of another thing to talk about. A lot of you emailed me about, oh, yes. House Bill, excuse me, Senate Bill 167 deals with Common Core. It's a bill that passed the Senate and has come over to the House. There's been a lot of negotiations going on, on that bill between the governor's office, the senators, and a couple of the, our education experts in the House, and dealing with the whole issue of Common Core and what the federal government's role is in education and what, maybe there's concern from a lot of people that the federal government will use Common Core to impose federal standards from Washington and take away our ability as Georgians to control our own destiny and control our own education. So this bill has come forward, and it's basically got two parts. The first part says, it sort of defines, and I really like this part, it defines better how we as Georgians would go about setting educational standards. Puts a panel together. The panel would involve teachers, the panel would involve parents, educators of all sorts, as well as the Department of Education and the state school board, and it would bring these folks together in a collaborative process to develop standards. The, and that's, that's one part of the bill. The second part of the bill really deals with one concern, a concern that folks who are opposed to Common Core have, and that is, how much data about our students are we going to share with, with other entities in state government? And should we at all share it outside of the state of Georgia? I don't want any, or I don't want our student data shared outside the state of Georgia unless the student moves to another state, and obviously, we'd want to share that. But, so the bill puts some restrictions on that, on what sort of information can be collected. We have in Georgia what we call a longitudinal data system, and the purpose of that basically is to collect data on the student, testing data, this is educational data, this is the kind of data we're talking about. The student's performance in class, what is the student learning, where are there, is the student struggling? And this is a very valuable tool for teachers. So when a, when a student moves from one grade to the next, the teacher just taps into the longitudinal data system, looks at the student, here's some areas that are struggling, we're going to help them there, here's some areas where they do well, we're going to make sure they continue to do well. And that's very valuable, a valuable tool for the teachers, especially if students, as happens all the time, move from one part of Georgia to the other. Teachers come in, they've got 25 new kids that they've never seen before, and they've got to figure out where each of these students are and how best to, to teach them and help them grow. So that So, that bill, there was a hearing yesterday on that bill in the House. There'll probably be some amendments and changes to that to try to improve it, working with Senator Ligon, who's the author of the bill, and the other stakeholders in that process. And hopefully, we can come up with something that's good, something that improves education in Georgia, that doesn't tie our teachers' hands. The emails I'm getting really are twofold. One are folks who are very much against Common Core, and then there, who are then in support of this bill, and then teachers who are concerned that we're about to more or less pull the rug out from under them and something that they have, because they're following the instructions that the state of Georgia has given them. Georgia signed up for Common Core and started implementing it. So, teachers out there have been training for it, preparing for it, and developing lesson plans and getting ready to adapt to this, and then all of a sudden, it changes. That can be very confusing for teachers, and they don't really know where they're standing. So, I hope that as this, over the next week, as this bill is worked on and tweaked, that we will have something that, no bill is ever perfect, but at least if we can have something that teachers and educators can support, and, and folks who are concerned about and oppose Common Core can say, all right, we've taken steps, we need to protect, protect Georgia and protect, and maintain our, our control over our curriculum and our standards here in Georgia. So, I think that bill is pretty close to being able to do that, and I hope there'll be some tweaks to that, and we'll keep an eye on that as the days move forward. So, continue to, feel free to continue to send me emails and express your opinion on that bill as it, as it moves forward through the process. I don't see any questions, and let me just glance on Twitter real quick. Sometimes folks send me something on Twitter. Don't see any emails. Well, we've been about a half an hour, and I've, I've talked long enough, and we will appreciate those of you who tuned in tonight, and those of you who are watching the replay. We will, will probably, the legislative session is scheduled to end on March the 20th, so we'll probably do one around that time, right after the session's over, do a session recap. Of course, you've got plenty of ways to communicate with me. Send out the weekly email if you're not subscribed to that. Of course, up in the upper right-hand corner of my webpage, you, you can click and subscribe to the list there, the link, my email list, rather. Also, I've got, I want to point out to you, I know many of you have downloaded this, the Vote for Buzz app, and it's right there on your, on your iPhone, and you've got my, my smiling face looking at you. And it keeps you up to date, shows you the latest Twitter and Facebook feeds from me. Of course, you've got information about where I, what I, what I believe, what I stand for. And also, some polls, and the poll that we've got in there right now deals with House Bill 707, which is the, I guess, a bill I should have mentioned, sort of a controversial bill. The Affordable Care Act was implemented by Congress and President Obama, and House Bill 707, Georgia, most Georgians, most Georgians that I talk with don't think that Obamacare is a good idea, and so, House Bill 707 takes steps to protect Georgians from that law and to not spend any state resources or state money on that. And I know some of you will agree with me, some of you disagree with me. I voted for the bill because I, healthcare, we haven't had a free market in healthcare in this country in a long, long time, and I'm, I'm a person who believes in the free market. I believe the free market delivers the best options for people, and that's true in healthcare, even in a, even in an industry like healthcare. And I think that the last thing we need, we, there's, I was not a fan of, not saying that our, our healthcare system was great beforehand, really what we're talking about, when we talk about healthcare, we need to separate, separate that in two different things. Healthcare itself, what our doctors do, and the technology, and the things that we have available to us to improve our health and maintain our health is fantastic, the best in the world. Our doctors and nurses and our healthcare system is the best there is. The problem is, how do you pay for that? And that's where the whole insurance situation comes in. Insurance is, you know, is very expensive, and it's a problem. So, I'm not saying that that health insurance marketplace, when, when I say I'm against the Affordable Care Act, I'm not saying that I think that the health insurance marketplace was, was great. But what I am saying is that I don't think that the answer is to, to impose heavy regulations on that, on that marketplace as we did through the Affordable Care Act. So, I think I just got a tweet from, from somebody about this. Let me see where, let me see if I can find that, try to address that. It said, "The AJC has an article that shows that the majority of Georgians actually support the ACA, particularly Medicaid expansion." So, let's talk about Medicaid expansion for a minute. Here's, here's, here's the problem, as I see it, with Medicaid expansion. Medicaid doesn't pay doctors and hospitals what, what they're doing, what it costs, even. Some of these Medicaid, some Medicaid reimbursements are less than what it costs the hospital or the doctor to do it. So, doing more of that doesn't seem to me to help. The federal government promised us all sorts of money to, to pay for Medicaid expansion. But, you know, federal government has, has a hard time keeping its promises. As we saw with the port in Savannah, the federal government had promised Georgia a lot of money to deepen that port, and it's been left out of the budget. So, they, for whatever reason, they chose not to do that. So, you know, should we accept Medicaid funds on the promise of all sorts of money from Washington? I don't think so. It's a, Medicaid is a broken system. Expanding it doesn't fix that. Pumping more money into it doesn't fix that. We've got to deal with other, we've got to fix other ways, find other ways to fix the, the Medicaid and healthcare system. And I, I'll point you also to a study done in Oregon. Oregon has been on the forefront of Medicaid expansion for a long time, long before Obamacare ever came around. Oregon, all on their own, as states have the right to do, they expanded Medicaid tremendously. And the study came out and found out that it didn't improve people's health or well-being, and it didn't improve, that they didn't lift them out of poverty. So, and it also did not, did not decrease the number of visits to emergency rooms, which is one thing that, that drives up healthcare costs. So, you know, you can agree with me or disagree with me, but I, I don't think, I don't think expanding Medicaid is, is going to help us. Follow-up question, access to healthcare should be for all citizens. I agree. I agree completely with you on that. But again, we have access to health, we have the, the best healthcare system in the world, I believe. The care that people can get is fantastic. The problem is, how do you pay for it? And that's, that's the problem. You walk into a, if you're sick and you walk into a hospital, there's not any doctor on the planet that's going to turn you away. They're going to treat you the best they can and help you the best they can. The problem is, how do we pay for that? And that's, now, there are, there are, no doubt, there are a couple of things in the Affordable Care Act that, that are helpful to people. Pre-existing conditions being one of that, which, which the writer mentions here. But, you know, that doesn't mean, you, you could have, you could deal with the issue of access to healthcare for low-income folks and folks who struggle paying for it without turning the whole marketplace upside down, which I believe unfortunately is what, what has been done. It would have been cheaper to just cut people a check and pay for their healthcare premiums for those that couldn't afford it than it would have been to do what we're doing now. And I, I think we're seeing a lot of really bad outcomes. We're seeing lots of people lose their healthcare coverage. We're seeing people, we're, we're not seeing the things that were expected to happen, happen, which is essentially that young, healthy people would, who didn't, didn't think that they should, who didn't think that they should, could afford to pay for healthcare, didn't, or chose not to pay for healthcare because they thought it was too expensive, we're, we're going to raise the prices on them and expect that now they're going to buy healthcare, and that's going to help fund the system. So, yeah, all right, then follow-up question again, let's take what's broken in the ACA and fix it. I'm fine with that. I think unfortunately, too much, so much of it is broken, you're going to be replacing a lot of it. I think Congressman Tom Price has a, a good idea. It's, it's, it is subsidize healthcare for people who need it. That would have been a lot simpler than this massive regime that we have now that taxes medical devices, that would, new medical devices, which would stifle innovation. It, it, what we're seeing now is driving doctors away, nurses away from the healthcare system, which is the last thing we need. We need more doctors, not fewer. So, anyway, I think, Latavi, I think we're going to have to agree to disagree on the bulk of this, but I do agree with you, healthcare, healthcare should be available to all. We need to do things to try to make it affordable, and I think there's things we can do, and my preference would be along the lines of, of getting government back away from regulating or imposing massive regulations on the healthcare system rather than, rather than imposing more as we've done with, with the Affordable Care Act. All right, we're at 7:42. We generally last about 40 minutes here on these, and I appreciate all of you tuning in, and those of you who watched the replay, thank you very much. Feel free to contact me anytime. My House email address is buzz.brockway@house.ga.gov. Again, download the app from the iPhone Store, go, go to the App Store and search for Vote the number four Buzz, and you'll find it. The, the Android version, all you Android phone habers, be patient, we are, we're very close to being able to launch that for you as well, and you can download that, too. So, I'm on Twitter at Buzz Brockway and Facebook, at Facebook at Buzz Brockway, you can find me, and of course, voteforbuzz.com. So, thank you very much, and we'll, we'll do this again in a couple of weeks. Thanks.